Good evening, and welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's Mayor and Common Council. During the public health crisis, we will be conducting our meetings remotely, and they will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We'll begin, as we do every meeting, with the pledge to the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information pack that the council will be using are available online at the city's website for anybody who'd like to follow along. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on August 10th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve, Mr. President.
A second.
And a motion for Mr. Cavaci and a second for Mr. DeHaas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. The minutes are adopted. We have two presentations this evening. The first is a status report on the E N R BioSolids Upgrade Project. And for that, we'll turn to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Jeff Glass. Mr. Glass?
Yes, sir. And I'll try to be as brief as possible. There's always a, seems to be a fine line with me between sufficient detail and boredom, so... But I'll do my best. When I tend to linger too long, give me the, give me the hook from the cane on the stage then. But, so, so this project has been a work in progress for quite some time. We've finally entered into the construction phase with our contractor H R I that was back in January of 2019. The construction timelines, although I've said this before, it's worth repeating. This is the largest construction project that the city has ever undertaken. It's a forty-two months to substantial completion and forty-eight months to final completion, and that is at this time. We've had a few things to occur that I'll get into a little bit later on that very likely will stretch that timeline to a little further. But again, it's, we're only about halfway through the project, so that remains to be seen as to whether that forty-two and forty-eight month is, we hold to that. We've had three change orders. One was about sinkhole remediation, and I'll be able to explain that a little bit further when we get into the presentation. Another was for SCADA programming and integration. That was a change order that was not originally supposed to be a change order, but we were kind of pushed to handle that part of the project by M D E to make it a change order. Originally was to be, to be a standalone portion of the project. And then the last one is a commercial power feed change by B G and E. But basically, all three of those are, were certainly beyond the city's control. Bottom line is that that holds us at a 1.7% change order rate. And statistically, if you can stay below 5% in a rehabilitation-type project, you're doing, that's considered success. So we are currently at 1.7. There is a cost share between the city and M D E, where Department of Environment participates in change orders and total cost to 53.65%. Another part of the project is upgrades to the septic facility. And that is, although the septic facility is on-site at the wastewater treatment plant, it is 100% county-funded for that. So if there are any questions, I'd love to answer them now before we move on to the PowerPoint. If not, then we'll go to the PowerPoint.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
Mr. Glass, I just want to be clear. The timeframe that you talked about at forty-two and, I think you said forty-six, that's from today's date?
Forty-two and forty-eight months. That was from originally, yeah, the beginning of the project, construction?
Okay, so that's forty-two, forty-two months from the start of the project, not from today?
That's correct.
Okay, you scared me. I thought I heard you say from today's date. I'm thinking, what is going on? That makes me feel a lot better. All right, thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Mr. Glass.
Okay, so hopefully, everybody can, can, can see my screen?
Yes.
What I hoped for was to have drone footage. As the contractor is using a drone to do their construction progress and recording that, that work on a regular basis, actually, not just construction photos, but they're actually using the drone. And it was my initial hope that we'd be able to, I'd have some footage, actual, something, you know, that's moving. And then I was gonna do my, my best Leonard Nimoy to narrate that. But, so the way it turns out, I do have drone footage, but it's not in video style. It's, it's in stills, so we're gonna use what I could get. And the next time the contractor flies the site, we'll have, we'll have actual video. They promised me they could do that, and I'd be able to share that a little bit later on. So, so let's dive in. So, so the first slide here just shows the north side of the treatment plant. You'll see, we refer to it as north side, south side, because the entire site is bisected by Little Pipe Creek. It's kind of in the, in the middle of the, of the screen there, right in that location. So this shot kind of shows the, the original part of the treatment plant that was in this area up here. Of course, we've added on to it a number of times, but with the control building there, et cetera. This is Little Pipe, or I'm sorry, Old New Windsor Pike, just to orient yourself a little bit. And then this road on this side is Route 31. This slide is the south side of the stream. So again, you can see Little Pipe Creek that flows through this way. To orient yourself, again, this is Route 31. The stockyards buildings that we, that we purchased probably a year or maybe a little more ago. And that is being rented to the contractor now as layout yard and office space. And of course, this is the, the old section of the treatment plant as well. So this is kind of the, the whole overview. Looking probably to the east more than anything else, but, and you can see there was snow on the ground, so this picture is, is actually a little bit older than, than, than the rest. But I thought it was, it was good to, to get an overall shot as well. It's a pretty expansive site. So what I'm gonna do is kind of flip back and forth between these overall shots. And then the, then the next slide beyond that, we'll kind of zoom in for a little bit more detail, but I'll give you the, the lowdown on where we'll be headed for that. So this is a little bit closer of the north side. The, where's my mouse? Here it is. So, so this was the, the older part of the treatment plant here with the administration building in this location. Again, Little Pipe Creek down here at the bottom. We'll zoom in on this area. This is where the electrical building is, where it will be. It's not in that site yet. We'll zoom in on this area a little bit later on. That's where a diesel generator pad is. And we'll zoom in on this area, as that's, that's a blower building that, that we'll be working on as well. This, you can see this tank is empty. This is reactor number one. And of course, it numbers right across. This is reactor two, three, four. We'll actually have five reactors. The fifth reactor goes under this building. This building is, becomes demolished. So our administration building then will relocate from this location to this building here. This is our solids handling building, and, and it will be repurposed for administration. So we'll build a new solids handling building. We'll get to that a little bit later on in the, in the presentation. So pay closer attention to this area right here. So what you saw in the previous picture was just a pad site. And this is the precast structure. We used a lot of precast in this project. Actually designed it that way for its, its speed of construction. And it certainly looks like it's, it's cast in place or, you know, conventional masonry. But, but again, this is all put together someplace else and then, and then hauled to the site. So as you can imagine, that's not spaghetti, obviously. That's my poor attempt at humor. These are electrical conduits, and you can, this kind of gives you a flavor of, of how many and what size pipes, et cetera, to go from one side of the stream to the other. This is just one location, but it's, it's, it's a tremendous amount of, and very intricate pipe work there. And they're all gonna contain wires to, to go from, from power feed to, to their point of distribution. So again, this is, is a very complex project. But that's, again, just only one location, but to give you an idea of the complexity of just, just the conduits. So now we're back to the, to the overview again. So look, pay your attention, please, to this location. This is where the, one of the diesel generators is, is gonna be. That's where we'll move next. So this will give you an idea of the, the size of one of the diesel generators. We'll have three of those installed, and they'll power different areas of the, of the treatment plant respectively. But you can see there's the size of humans in the background there. And this is a rather large sound attenuating cover that will go over top of the diesel generator. They're in the 1,500 kilowatt range. We had a little surprise when we started with this, that we got application for a power generating facility as if we were gonna generate power commercially and, and compete with, with B G and E or Con Ed or somebody. Clearly, that was not the case, but between all the capacity, power generating capacity that we'd have with all three generators, we, that tipped us over the line to be considered a power generating facility. With some further discussion, we were able to get a waiver and, and did not have to, to go through that whole process. But that was a little scary at that point as well, because you'd have air emissions and et cetera to, to have to deal with, with that. And that's not something we had anticipated. Next section is, is in this location here. This is where the, where the blower building is. And again, we're using precast concrete. So, you know, it looks like a brick and block structure, but that is not the case. This is all precast concrete with, with brick appearance. So this building, although at the time of the, the picture was all vacant inside, now houses the turbo blowers that we have on-site. These are, these blowers are super efficient. They use an, an air-bearing technology, which is a frictionless arrangement. It was actually developed by NASA and, and had been sold to, for other applications much like this. So, and we'll have, I think there's, I think there's five with room for another blower in, in this location as well. Let me go back one. Yeah. Okay, so now we move to the, to the south side. So this, this area down here will be our, our next move. This is where the denitrification facility is, is going to be, where it's being located, being constructed as we speak. So that'll give you kind of an idea. That would be nice if I could turn my phone down. Let's kind of give you an idea of the below-grade amount of rebar. This is, of course, is all to be covered with concrete and the wall structures, but that's quite the maze. And this is all the below-ground portion of this project. From above ground, this, this filter system will be just over four stories tall. The idea behind this is, as the, as the name suggests for denitrification, is although there, there are sand filters, it is an attached growth process where we'll cultivate microorganisms on each grain of sand. And, and through the magic of chemistry, the nitrates will be converted to nitrogen gas and go off to the environment. This, the other part about this project, this complete section here, this is where the sinkhole was, unstable soils were discovered and, and was the result of, of change order number one. So now we're back to the, to the overview. And, and I'll direct your attention then to, whoops, to an area, if I can find my mouse, right in this location. And that's the utility water pump station. Again, you see the familiar theme of using cast, or I'm sorry, tip-up concrete. And, and so what happens in, in this room is, that's where all the utility water for the, for the treatment plant will be pumped and maintained and pressurized. Also, from this facility is, is piping that connects over to Performance Food Group. I'm not sure that everyone will remember, but we, we provide reuse water to Performance Food Group for their refrigeration needs and, and heat disposition, and also for their fire protection as well. So those pumps, all that will be, will be located inside this room. One other thing that will occur in the distribution system of, of this, of the utility water pump station is the heating and cooling needs for the rest of the treatment plant will, will, will be enhanced by the water that this station pumps. Kind of like geothermal, kind of an arrangement. This is something that I had wanted to do for years and years, as there is energy, thermal energy available in, in wastewater. And I wanted to be able to recover that. So we were lucky enough to, to obtain a grant from the Department of Energy. It was just under a million dollars for that. And so we'll be using that, that pumped water for the heating and cooling for the rest of the treatment plant as well. Just, just another shot of the, of the same building. You can see that they're installing roof planks at the top. That's, you know, additional precast concrete that, that will go across the, the roof. So now we're back to the south side overview. If I can find my mouse. So I'll note your attention to this area right here. So in this shot, you can see there's a good bit of structural steel that's, that is in place and is being erected. This is where the solids handling, the new solids handling building will be. If you recall from earlier in the, in the presentation, I showed you the, where the administration building was gonna be demolished, and then it would move to the old solids handling building and where that would be repurposed. That solids handling building now is, will be relocated to this area. And, and there's more actually than just solids handling. There will be a dryer installed with this one as well, where that, that bio solids then can be, at that point, can be used as a, as a fuel source. And that's gonna be our ultimate, keep your fingers crossed, that's our ultimate means of, of disposal for the bio solids product. So just another shot that shows a little bit, a little bit more distance, but they're, they're still constructing the, the steel at that point. And, and this will have a, a precast concrete skin over this building as well. The crane's rather sizable there, but to give you a flavor of the height, that'll be just over five stories tall by the time it's complete. So I think that, that unless, of course, I'm ready to answer whatever questions or hopefully be able to answer any questions you may have at this point. But that kind of concludes the presentation until, again, at some future time, I'll be able to get a video, drone video, and I'll be able to share that as well. Questions?
All right, very good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Glass. Are there any questions for Mr. Glass?
Mr. President, one, one quick question?
Yeah, sure. Mr. Cavaci?
So, Mr. Glass, the, it's not, I know it's not geothermal. It's, you're extracting the energy of the wastewater, like you discussed, the heat and cool the facility. What, what's generating that energy? Is it the temperature of the water coming in out of the households? Or is it the actual breakdown of the biomatter that's generating that energy?
So, so it's actually both. It'll start more so with the warm shower that you like to take every morning. Beyond that, you know, they, even the groundwater is, in geothermal terms, doesn't get cold enough to, to freeze at, at any time. So it starts out warm and, and pretty much stays, it loses some temperature as it goes through the piping. But then, once it gets to the treatment plant, the, the mechanics of the, of the chemistry breakdown will actually cause things to heat as well.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Any other questions?
And did you have a question? Because I have one.
My, mine really wasn't a question as much as, as it was a, thank you for the update on the presentation and the tour back on June 12th, because even though these pictures are absolutely wonderful, standing amongst all that is, is very amazing. And just the one-on-one, it kind of puts everything in perspective when you actually see it in front of you. So, so thank you, and I'm looking forward to maybe my, my fall/winter tour.
Just let me know.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. DeHaas? Mr. DeHaas?
When did, remind me, when did we break ground on this?
So that was shortly after the time that, that we gave notice to proceed to H R I. So January, February of 2019.
Oh, okay. When, when do you anticipate that it will be completed?
So right now, substantial completion is four years beyond 2019, so 2023, January 2023. If, you know, providing we, we could stick to that schedule.
Do you have a cost estimate? Is how much money you're gonna save on the HVAC with the geothermal approach?
So, yes, there were, I'll have to get that to you. I don't know that right off the top of my head. We had to include that with, in the grant package, but I'm sorry, I, I don't recall what that number was. It's significant, though.
Yeah. And that, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty good stuff. Okay. Yeah, and I also appreciated my tour. It was, it was, it was pretty neat. It's all, it's all quite fascinating. And thank you for, yeah, and thank you for putting all this together. I super appreciate it.
Sure, you're certainly welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. DeHaas. Are there any other questions for Mr. Glass? All right, hearing none. Mr. Glass, thank you very much. It was a very interesting report. I'll look forward to getting a tour as well sometime over the next few months and see how you're doing over there.
Certainly.
With that, we will move on to our second presentation, which is an update on Wakefield Valley Park from our Director of Recreational Parks, Ms. Abby Gruber. Ms. Gruber?
Good evening. I unfortunately have strictly information for you this evening. I don't have graphics or any photographs. This is all information on the three successful grants that the city has secured to move ahead with master plan at Wakefield Valley Park and some other initiatives. As you know, it is our intent to preserve and improve the former Wakefield Valley Golf Course as a future park and recreational asset for the city of Westminster. Now, with that said, ongoing initiatives to secure grant funding have resulted in three successful awards to date. Through this report, I will describe each funding source, the associated timeline, the total amount of each award, along with matching requirements, and lastly, the intent of each project that funding was successfully received for. So in December of 2018, the city submitted a grant application for funding through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. The Land and Water Conservation Fund grants are a result of the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of 1965, which established a federally funded program to provide 50/50 matching grants to state and local governments for the sole purpose of acquiring and developing public outdoor recreational areas and facilities. This program is administered nationally by the United States Department of the Interior National Park Service, with the supporting revenues generated from offshore oil and gas leases. The Land and Water Conservation Fund is intended to create and maintain a nationwide legacy of quality public outdoor recreational resources, as well as to stimulate non-federal investments in the purchase, development, maintenance, and protection of highly valued outdoor recreational areas. Since its inception, the Land and Water Conservation Fund program has funded over 400 acquisition and development projects throughout the state of Maryland. So that's not a lot, and we're very fortunate to have received this funding. The city's initial Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application was not approved. That's the application that was submitted in December 2018. However, the application was refined and resubmitted in March of 2019. And in September of 2019, the city was notified that this time the application was a success. The approved project totaling $239,700 requires 50% matching funds. The scope of the project includes funding for procurement of professional services to develop a phased, comprehensive park master plan involving a robust public outreach and engagement process. Along with funding for the master plan, the balance of funds are available to endeavor into the first phase of development, which will likely be stabilization of access to the park through rehabilitation of the existing parking area. A request for proposals for park master planning services was submitted to Ms. Matthews in November of 2019. After extensive review, the project was placed out for bid on July 17, 2020. On August 7, proposals were due. Almost 20 firms submitted proposals. Currently, those proposals are still under review. However, staff have narrowed submissions from 19 proposals to four. We are still conducting interviews and reference checks at this point in time. It is anticipated that staff will bring forth a recommendation for park master planning services at the September 14 Mayor and Common Council meeting. However, if we are delayed in our research, it will be the following meeting. So that's the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant that will allow us to endeavor into a park master plan for Wakefield Valley. In May of 2019, the submitted, the city submitted another grant application for additional funding through Maryland Department of Natural Resources Program Open Space. This program was established in 1969 under the Department of Natural Resources Program, under the Department of Natural Resources. Program Open Space is Maryland's long-term commitment to conserving the state's natural resources while providing exceptional outdoor recreation opportunities for its citizens. The revenues that support this grant opportunity are secured through the state property transfer tax. So basically, that means when a person buys a house or land in the state of Maryland, a half of a percent of the transfer tax is collected and set aside as designated funding for Program Open Space. This was designed to directly tie development to available funding for open space and recreational facilities for the public good. So essentially, the financial support of homeowners and landowners in Maryland has resulted in the acquisition of more than 334,000 acres of open space directly through Program Open Space for state parks and natural resource areas, and more than 46,000 acres of local parkland, which our Wakefield Valley Park would fall into, adding to that 46,000 acres. So in August of 2019, the city's application for funding was approved, resulting in a total grant award of $90,142. This particular grant requires 5% matching total grant award of $90,142, this particular grant requires 5% matching funds from the city and 5% matching funds from the county, this funding source is dedicated to advancing park development once the park master planning process and public engagement process is completed. With recent funding success, so that basically is money, as soon as we decide what our first steps of park development would be, there's just a little bit of seed money to get one of those projects started, so whether it's a scenic picnic shelter or improved ADA access to the trailhead, it's a small pot of money, but it's money nevertheless to keep the momentum going. Lastly, with the recent funding success and to, and to continue our positive momentum, in February 2020, the city submitted a third grant application through the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority Grants Program, stick with me here, the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority Grant Program is a source of funding designed to assist and encourage the preservation of historical, archaeological, natural, and cultural resources, and support economic development through heritage tourism within heritage areas that are certified by the authority, fortunately, the boundaries of the city of Westminster lie within the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area, allowing the city eligibility to apply for funding through this program. Grant proposals are expected to align with the goals and priorities described in the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area Management Plan and Five-Year Action Plan, so we had to do some research to align our application to make sure that we were meeting those goals that the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area had outlined. The intent of the city's grant application through MHAA was to secure funding to study inventory and develop appropriate preservation measures and adaptive reuse strategies for the historic Durbin House as a key park amenity, the historic Durbin House is the historic farmhouse that sits on the Wakefield Valley Park site, not the clubhouse that was built in the late 80s, early 90s, so this is for the original farmstead that was on the property before it was even a golf course. On July 9th, 2020, the city was notified that their application for funding in the amount of $50,000 was approved to procure professional services to conduct a historical structures assessment of the Durbin House, this funding source requires a 50% match, the good news is, this match can likely be achieved through receipt and proof of expenditure of federal funds acquired through the city's Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. A request for proposals was developed and forwarded to Ms. Matthews for review on July 22nd, it is our hope that this project will be out to bid by the end of this week, this concludes my grants update, unless there are questions.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Gruber, are there any questions for Ms. Gruber on this?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
Ms. Gruber, first off, thank you, that was a great report, and thank you for all your work and your staff's work securing these grants, you know, that's well over 300, probably pushing $400,000 with the grant funding that you brought in, and that's wonderful to go after that, I, I know that it's, a lot of it's mostly for study money, although that one grant, it looks like it is going to actually produce some, some real results in terms of potentially the parking lot fits up, but do you, do you see future opportunities that will allow us to potentially go after additional funding, you know, I'm, I'm thinking in particular on the Durbin House, obviously, you know, I, I've been through that, look, you know, it's in, it's in real rough shape, it's going to need a ton of money probably to get it back up and, and to the standard that people could actually go in there and look at it as a historic site, or potentially for, for it to be used for some purpose, what do you think the reality is in terms of our ability to maybe go after money to help with the restoration of that?
So, one of the good news stories that comes out of acquiring funding is generally when a federal program or a state program invests initial money in grant funding, you are, I wouldn't say moved to the top of any priority list, but you're more likely to continue to acquire funding for a project that they have already invested in, so the $50,000 for the study of the Durbin House through MHAA is considered a non-capital grant request, and so, once we have the results of that study and a phased approach to preservation and rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of that site and that building, then we can go in and apply for capital funding to begin some of the restoration efforts.
So, I, I don't know if I ever shared this, Mr. President, may I continue?
Sure, please do.
I, I don't know if I ever shared this with you, Ms. Gruber, and for the rest of the group, I, I may not have shared it with all of you, but I think some of you may be aware, I was approached a number of years ago by some family members related to the, I guess, the Durbin family, or the, or the family that was originally on that property and built that building, the, the woman, and, and I think it may have been her son, that I met with, I think are from Georgia or somewhere down south, they came up and we actually had lunch together, and they expressed an interest in potentially helping in terms of either funding or raising funds or providing funds, it's, it's been a number of years, but, you know, they, they expressed some interest in the, in the restoration of that, that building, kind of petered out, because it really just didn't go anywhere for a little while as we were trying to figure out what we were going to do with it, and now that it looks like, you know, that might be more the direction that we're going to potentially head in, you know, I'd like to see, maybe we could try to figure out how to reengage them potentially, unless you don't feel like that's, that's worthwhile, but I, I don't even know if I ever shared that with you, Ms. Gruber, and, and just for the rest of my colleagues, just for your verification, there is some interest from some of those family members, and maybe we can figure out a way to leverage, leverage their interest into potentially raising some more funds as well, that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavaci, and Ms. Gruber will leave that to you to figure out how you might want to incorporate that into your planning and keep us informed along the way on that, any other questions from Ms. Gruber? All right, well, that was a great report, thank you, you know, I think, you know, we, as well as many of the residents, you know, around Wakefield Valley are very interested in, you know, in any progress the city makes on that, and so I think it's valuable for us to take this time to, to update the entire elected body as well as the community, to make sure that people are aware of the progress that we're making down there, as, as we've said, on many occasions, we're not in any rush to make anything happen there, it's a tremendously large piece of property, it's very important, not just to the people who live around it, but to the entire city, and it's really a legacy project, you know, for us, it's, you know, whatever we do, there's going to be part of the legacy of this group of elected officials, and we want to get it right, so, you know, thank you for the good work on, and helping try and smooth that out.
You're welcome.
We will move on now to the consent calendar, we have one item for approval on the consent calendar, is the July 2020 departmental operating reports, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve, oh.
Second. There's been a motion by Ms. Gilbert to approve the consent calendar, and a second by Mr. Cavaci, are those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say nay, the opinion of the chair, the aye seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved, it's now time for our report from the mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll keep it brief and try to only cover things that will not be covered in committee reports, the two things I'd like to kind of, you know, fill everyone in on is, I haven't talked about it in a little while, but we are in the middle of redesigning our own city website, and it's coming along, we are completed the, the design phase, so all the colors and the elements and images and things like that have been approved, and we'll be moving on to the build out, which time, just to give everyone a little foresight, the current content from our, our, our current website is largely going to be moved over, and then I'm going to work with department heads to change and update that once it's in place, but I wanted to just give everyone a quick update on that. The other thing that I wanted to fill everyone in on, and this is new for me over the last few days, is the Kaufman Foundation has a conference every year, the Mayor's Conference on Entrepreneurship, and I wanted to go this year, because if you go, you, on top of the, you know, the things that you learn there and the opportunities that you may be able to create while, while there, you become, your city becomes eligible for certain types of tech or innovative projects, and unfortunately, it was originally scheduled for the same exact days as the, as our MML conference, so I originally wasn't going to be able to go, but due to the pandemic, they have moved virtually and changed the date, it'll be in September, and I signed up for it, so I will be virtually attending that conference, against the Mayor's Conference on Entrepreneurship, the Kaufman Foundation, and we will, will then be eligible for some grant funds on top of, maybe, you know, I'll come out of it with some, some fresh ideas and things we hadn't thought of, so I just wanted to keep everyone abreast of that, and I will report back after I attend, thank you, Mr. President.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, sounds like an interesting event, and we'll look forward to hearing more about it later in September, next item on the agenda is the COVID-19 pandemic update, usually our city administrator fills us in, but she's not with us this evening, I don't know if anybody else on the staff has any significant items they want to share that have to do with, with the city's ongoing response to the pandemic, if they do, welcome their, you know, I'm sort of raising their hands now, but if not, we will move on from there and move on to reports from standing committees, and the first would be a report from the Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff?
No report this month, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff, Economic and Community Development, Mr. Yingling?
Sure, we held a Economic and Community Development meeting last week, but most of that, I think, is going to be covered in another part of the agenda, over the water and sewer allocation policy, so I'll let staff report on that.
All right, very good, thank you, for the Finance Committee, our report, that you all will recall that back at the, you know, some time ago, we, a few weeks ago, we agreed to go into the bond market through the state's Community Development Administration for the Local Government Infrastructure Finance Program, and we have learned that on August 4th, the 2020 Series A pooled issuance went into the bond market and was priced, and that included the city's community pool renovations project, it was a very good effort on the state's part, it was well received by investors, and they, they were able to secure a very favorable interest rate of 2.29%, additionally, CDA's bonds generated a substantial premium from the sale, sufficient to cover the city's pro-rata portion of the cost of issuance, which was $32,000 and change, from a, from a practical standpoint, the premium reduces the size of the city's loan principal balance that it will be required to pay back to the CDA, so that's more good news for us, the CDA has now successfully closed on the Local Government Infrastructure Finance Program 2020 Series A pooled issuance, the loan proceeds for the city's pool renovations project are now available for the city to draw down, and so we will have those funds available to us as we move forward with that project, so, just some good news on that front, for the Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert, do you have anything to share?
Not too much, we're just moving ahead with the process of the interviews for hiring the Director of the HR Department, and that's about all for right now.
All right, thank you, Public Safety Committee, Mr. Cavaci?
Thanks, Mr. President, very brief, I had the honor of filling in for the mayor for, to swear in a new lateral transfer police officer, Officer Moyer, from the York County Sheriff's Office, other than that, things remain quiet and consistently running below, you know, previous years in terms of crime rate, so that's, that's positive, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, I'm Mr. President.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Cavaci, Public Works, Mr. Yingling?
No report.
All right, thank you, Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff?
I think we're going to cover some, some items for recreation parks later on in the meeting, so I will, I'll defer to the, to the mayor on, I'll defer to the mayor on that, but may I ask a question about the Finance Committee report, please?
You may, although, we don't have our Finance Director here, so we may not be able to get you the answer that will be as informative as you like, but go ahead.
I wonder, when, when do you think we might be able to move forward with some of the, some of the renovations to the pool, since we're, we're starting to wrap up on the bond and that sort of thing, or is that maybe perhaps a question, Ms. Gruber, or, because?
Well, I think that is a question for Ms. Gruber, or, and we'll see where we stand with that, Ms. Gruber, have you got any information for us on that?
So, I do, we are working right now on writing the bid specifications for the project, they're fairly in-depth, so they're taking a little bit longer than I had anticipated, but certainly is at the top of our priority list to get those written and over for review as soon as possible.
That's good news.
There you go.
Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Yeah, that's, that's good news, because, I mean, while we're not using the pool, I mean, it's the perfect time to, to get some of that work completed, and I don't know, I don't know how quickly we can move forward on that, but, but I think a lot of folks are excited about the pool renovations, and I think we have a lot of ideas in addition to the, the, the Dominic splash pad, so I'm looking forward to that coming forward, thanks.
Thank you, well, as Ms. Gruber said, it's at the top of the list, so I'm sure we'll be hearing from her shortly on, on some progress on that, move on now to council comments and discussion, this is an opportunity for council members to raise any, any issues or mention items that don't appear elsewhere on the agenda, and we will start, Mr. Dayhoff, anything you'd like to bring up?
No, sir, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert?
No, I, I actually, yes, it's brief and kind of fun, I want to thank Ms. Gruber for allowing me to, to help out her and her team last Thursday with the snowball distribution, and remind everyone that there will be free snowballs again this Thursday, and hopefully I will be helping out again, if my schedule allows.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert, it was fun to come, walk down the street and see you there, helping out with the snowballs and see Ms. Gruber and her team, and I know, while I was there, quite a number of cars did drive through for their snowballs, and some people wandered up as well, and I know that even some, some puppies had the chance to enjoy some snowballs, so it was a, it was a fun time, and I think people really enjoyed it, and once again, thanks to Ms. Gruber and her team for trying to come up with some things to do despite, you know, the limitations imposed by the virus, Mr. Yingling?
No comments this evening, thank you.
All right, thank you, and finally, Mr. Cavaci?
Yeah, Mr. President, one, one quick thing, I wanted to just take a minute and thank the mayor for his effort on the city's website, I, I'm sure we all probably know this, but just, you know, as a fellow small business owner, you know, the mayor is conducting services for the city that he directly gets paid for in his normal course of business, and it's a valuable service, yet he is not being paid to do this, outside of, of course, his, you know, mayor salary, but that's, that doesn't necessarily typically include what he's doing, what he's doing, he's using his hard-won, hard-learned lessons and, and skill sets that he applies every day in his business for the benefit of the city, and that, that's not a small deal, that, that's a big deal, and I think we are fortunate to have a mayor that has those skills and is willing to basically donate them to the city, and I'm appreciative of that, and I'm sure everyone else is as well, but I just wanted to point it out, to, to make sure that everyone is clear that, you know, he's, he's going above and beyond, in my opinion, doing these things for the city. that everyone is clear that, uh, you know, he's, he's, uh, going above and beyond, in my opinion, doing these things for the city. So typically, we would have to pay somebody probably quite a bit of money for. I, I, while I don't work directly in that field, I, my business is very tangential to his business. I know what those services cost and they are very expensive. And, and we're getting them for free. So I just wanted to take a moment and thank him for that and, uh, let him know I appreciate it. I'm sure I speak for all of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci, and certainly, uh, we all do appreciate it. And the mayor does it not just for the city, but for a lot of other, you know, uh, you know, good causes in the city. And then, you know, those, his, you know, thanks are well-deserved for that as well.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you for the kind words, Mr. Cavaci. I do want to clarify one thing. Um, we, we are, we are paying a company that does, uh, like it's a monthly fee for, you know, for maintenance and hosting and, and they are implementing some, uh, you know, some things in the site. So I'm, I'm, I'm the project manager on it and I'm moving it forward, but it, it's not entirely free. There, there's a company that we, that the city's been using for at least several years. The last time the site was, uh, designed or redesigned, at least that far back. So, uh, but I, I did want to, you know, say thank you for those words. And, um, you know, I don't know how long, uh, you know, I, I'm going to be in office. Yes, that depends on a lot of factors, but, uh, I, I would not feel good if I left anyway and, uh, had not, um, made some improvements to the, uh, you know, the web presence of the city. So, um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get asleep at night if I left the website the way that it is. So we will, uh, we will continue to get that knocked out and it should be, um, moving pretty quickly now. Thank you.
Good. Well, we're looking forward to the improvement. Uh, the next item on the agenda are bids. We have three bids, uh, for your approval this evening. The first one is approval of the purchase of a replacement, of replacement pickup trucks for the Street Department and Utility Maintenance Department. Uh, we'll turn to Mr. Glass for that. Mr. Glass?
Yes, sir. The, uh, current, um, adopted budget allocates funding the amount of $50,000 for the replacement of one truck that is, uh, at the Utility Maintenance Department. Um, and that's funded, uh, 50% by the Water Fund and 50% by the Sewer Fund. The truck will be used for the, uh, for the meter reader and that's why, um, the split is, uh, follows those, uh, those, that scenario. Uh, the other truck is, uh, in the General Fund and that's for the, the, uh, Street Department. Again, that's $50,000 for that truck, um, but it's not split with anybody. So, uh, that's, the General Fund takes it on the nose for that. Both vehicles are available by existing contract between the State of Maryland and, um, Apple Ford from, um, Columbia, Maryland. And, uh, as it, as it is, the Westminster's Procurement Code allows for the city to piggyback on that competitively, competitively awarded contract as well. The vehicles are, um, F-350 Supercabs with, uh, complete utility bodies and snowplows. Further information, if you look back in the, in the packet, is available, um, is in the quote specification sheets. The cost of each vehicle, because they're virtually identical, or is $42,550, which includes, uh, the selected options as well. So at this point, we would recommend the Mayor and Council authorized purchase of the two pickup trucks from Apple Ford, uh, in Columbia, Maryland for the total amount $85,100. I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glass. Um, I have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve.
All right. Thank you. Then a motion from Mr. Dayhoff and a second from Mr. Cavaci. Is there any discussion or are there any questions for Mr. Glass? All right. Hearing none. We'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the bid, please, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? The opinion of the Chair, the aye seem to have it and the ayes have it, and the purchase is approved. Mr. Glass, would you like to, uh, move on and tell us about the purchase of a replacement mower deck?
Yes, sir. Um, so, uh, once again, it's, it's budgeted in the current budget, the amount of $26,000 to replace a, uh, 180, 168-inch progressive mower deck attachment for the Street Department. Again, and this is a replacement mower. Um, it's just the mower. It's not the, uh, the, the power source. But, uh, the existing unit is over 10 years old and like many of us has outlived its reliable usefulness. So it's time to, uh, time to replace that. This equipment is particular to the manufacturer and the manufacturer's designated dealer representatives are assigned specific territories. So therefore, we really can't go to a competitive bidding process. It's just not a viable option for us. Um, and Westminster Procurement Code allows for sole source procurement in circumstances such as this. Of course, the equipment being purchased is, again, 168-inch batwing mower attachment. It's, uh, manufactured by Trackless and it is available through, uh, Trackless's dealer representative of the U.S. Municipal in, uh, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania. Um, there's additional information, again, um, in the, in the following pages, um, for the, uh, in the attached quote. The cost of the equipment, including freight, is $25,800. And at this point, we would recommend Mayor Council to approve the sole source procurement for this replacement mower attachment from U, M, U, yes, U.S. Municipal located at, uh, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania in the amount of $25,800.
All right. Just, just under the wire on the budget. Good job getting, staying under.
Yes.
Any, uh, any questions for, or, well, let's take the motion first. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
But a motion from Mr. Dayhoff and a second from Ms. Gilbert to approve. Any questions for Mr. Glass or any comments?
Just one. Just one?
Go ahead.
Um, hey, uh, Mr. Glass, are we going to keep the, uh, the other Trackless unit?
So we'll keep the power units. It's the, it's the mower deck that is.
The mower deck. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Are we going to keep the, the other mower deck?
So we probably will until such time that it just doesn't go anymore. And then, and then we'll, that'll go to, uh, uh, public surplus probably.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I, I call the vote.
All right. Thank you. Are there, um, hearing no other questions? We will move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay? The opinion of the Chair, the aye seem to have it and the ayes have it, and the bid is approved. Uh, the final bid is approval of a contract with Spatial Systems Associates for GIS-related engineering services. And for that, Mr. Davidson, the, uh, Director of our new, uh, Technology Department, Mr. Davidson.
Good afternoon. Can you all hear me all right?
Yep. Certainly.
This will be your 2020. In the city, a contract with Spatial Systems Associates for engineering services, part of the city's continuous efforts to complete layers in the water and sewer system. As part of the ongoing related work to the city water and sewer infrastructure, Spatial Systems Associates will perform the following tasks. A GIS data collection by field observation using high-agency equipment. Updates to the water and sewer distribution systems. Identify additional source materials. Investigate su- actually, in, integrate sewer video inspection data. Training in the, uh, use of the GIS field data collection hardware and software. Funding for this work performed by Spatial Associates is included in the FII 2021 budget from the Water and Sewer Fund. The city will take advantage of the state Maryland's pricing by piggybacking on the state contract. The state pricing was acquired through a competitive bid process. Staff recommends that the common council approves the contract with Spatial Associates and not to exceed the amount of $200,000.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Um, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Uh, the motion for Mr. Dayhoff and a second for Mr. Cavaci to approve the bid. Uh, are there any questions for Mr. Davidson or are there any, any discussion on the item? Hearing none. We'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? The opinion of the Chair, the aye seem to have it and the ayes have it, and the contract is approved. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. We'll now move on to ordinances and resolutions. And, uh, we have one item there, Resolution Number 20-06, amending the adopted water and sewer allocation policy for 2018, 2024 and accompanying master distribution chart. For that, we will turn to our Director of Planning, Mr. Depot. Mr. Depot?
Thank you and good evening. The Department of Community Planning Staff is seeking Mayor and Common Council approval to amend the adopted water and sewer allocation policy for 2018, 24 and the accompanying master distribution chart. The staff report provided breaks down these, um, amendment top into four specific topics. Allocation standards for apartments. This is a potential recapture of water and sewer. Emergency sewer connections, nonprofit allocation category, and then some corrections and inconsistencies in the master distribution chart and also changes that make tracking a little bit easier. Under the allocation standards for apartments, under the current City of Westminster water and sewer allocation policy, apartments and conversion dwellings have been allocated the same amount of water as a single-family detached unit, which is 235 gallons per day. The department staff, um, questioned whether allocating the same amount of water for multifamily units or apartments and single-family detached units was appropriate. We conducted analysis of five different apartment complexes and conversion dwelling within, within the City of Westminster to evaluate the water usage over the last 12 months. And the study demonstrated that it was significantly less than 235 gallons per day that we have been allocating. Staff provided the research to the Maryland Department of the Environment Representative at Carroll County Health Department. And after extensive coordination, the new water allocation standard was agreed upon, upon, excuse me, which is 150 gallons per day for one and two-bedroom apartments and 180 gallons per day for three-bedroom apartments. When we use these numbers with past allocations that are listed in the master distribution chart, we recapture three, or 5,375 gallons of water, um, that can be further distributed, um, in the county, which staff has recommended that we do do. So we are asking that we redistribute this to other developments, other mass, other multifamily developments, emergency connections, annexations and public uses. I'll get more in detail as we get to the recommendations. Um, if anybody has questions about this section? If not, I'll move on.
Any questions, Mr. Depot? All right.
So the next topic is, uh, the next topic is emergency connections. The water and sewer allocation policy via the master distribution chart initially allocated one emergency water and, emergency sewer connection per year. This increased the two connections between 2018 and 2022. It decreases to one connection in 2023 and then no connections in 2024. The City of Westminster has been fortunate that a number of properties needing an emergency connections have been minimal with only an emergency water, uh, connection in 2018. However, the city has already approved five sewer-only emergency connections in 2020. This is exhausting all available connections remaining for 2020. There has been an uptick in these emergency connections. We believe it might be due to the pandemic and people staying at home longer. Also with, uh, uh, sales of houses. If it's on a septic system, it has to be, um, looked at by the Health Department and they're finding that they are failing. So the master distribution part, um, as part of the initial one-time allocation, did set aside 5,405 gallons per day for sewer-only connections with good cause waivers. Four of the five recent emergency connections were for properties located outside of the city. And under normal circumstances, these properties may have required or been able to follow the good cause waiver application process. However, as these properties were deemed to be failing and requiring emergency sewer connections pursuant to Carroll County Health Department, it restricted their ability to go through the good cause waiver process, uh, because of timing, obviously. So in an effort to address this need for immediate connections due to failing systems, staff is recommending that the water and sewer allocation policy be amended to allow the good cause waiver and irrevocable consent for annexation to be approved administratively by the Mayor and Director of Planning, as opposed to the current process of obtaining approval by the Mayor and Common Council. Um, furthermore, uh, staff recommended a portion of the water recaptured from the proposed new water allocations for apartment units as discussed in topic, the initial topic, also be reallocated to these emergency sewer connections, again, to take advantage or, or to plan ahead for a potential future, um, emergency connections. Any question on this topic? Third, third issue is nonprofit allocation. When the water and sewer allocation policy was initially adopted, the city was aware of three major proposed nonprofit projects. These were the Human Services Program of Carroll County, or HSP, located at 12 Carroll Street, the Family and Children's Services of Central Maryland, FCS, located at 7 Schoolhouse Avenue, and the Carroll County Veterans Independence Project, VIP. Uh, water allocation estimates were initially applied to each of these three projects, uh, for a total of 4,200 gallons per day. However, the total allocation was rounded up by 800 gallons per day for a total of 5,000 gallons in the master distribution chart. The HSP project at 12 Carroll Street is not moving forward, as we know, at this time due to various complications. And HSP and city staff are unable to predict whether this project will be renewed in the future. The FCS project did receive planning and commission approval on May 14th, 2020 and is close to receiving final approval, allowing development to commence. And then there is no activity at this time related to the VIP project. Recently, staff, um, has been coordinating with S, with HSP regarding a new proposed project to relocate 22 beds from its Green Street Shelter to an existing men's shelter located at 127 Stoner Avenue. This does require water allocation of 376 gallons per day. A water and sewer allocation application has been received for this project. However, the master distribution chart has stated does not allocate any additional water for nonprofit projects outside of the three projects listed above. In addition, staff has been approached by the Westminster Rescue Mission regarding a proposed project as well, uh, nonprofit project. So in this case, staff is recommending that the 376 gallons per day previously intended for the HSE, HSP project located at 12 Carroll Street be moved and allocated to the HSP project for 127 Stoner Avenue. Furthermore, staff recommends that 1,362 gallons, this is the difference between the unused water allocated for the HSP 12 Carroll Street project and the remaining unallocated 800 gallons above the initial estimates be made available for other nonprofit projects. So essentially, it's open to any nonprofit that comes in versus just being limited to those three specific projects. When August 20th, 2020, staff did introduce these proposed amendments to the Mayor and Common Council's Economic Development Committee for Review and Guidance. The EDC incurred with the proposed amendments requesting and requested that the Mayor and Common Council be informed when administrative allocations for sewer-only connections with good cause waivers are approved and directed staff to forward Resolution 2006 to the full elected body for consideration. Sorry. To, so with that, uh, the staff report highlights specifically the, uh, recommendations. If you would like me to go through those or if anybody has any questions before? And?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Depot. Um, any questions for Mr. Depot? On all of this, we, as you mentioned, we did have a, uh, as you mentioned, we did have a lengthy conversation about this at the EDC meeting and, uh, you know, did recommend approval. Mr. Yingling may want to comment on that. Mr. Cavaci, you're seeking recognition?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Depot, I, I, so, one of the changes that you're asking or that this is recommending that we make is to, I guess, basically we take away the need for full council approval for these emergency waivers and, uh, move that authority over to you and the mayor. Uh, is that, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I, I know that there was a mention, um, and I'm trying to, I was trying to find it. So the requirement that someone comes into the city, uh, still stands regardless of who has that authority. Is that, so is that just water and sewer or, or does that also apply if they're just applying for sewer?
In this case, the, uh, the only allocation under that standard was for sewer-only connections. That 5,000 plus that's in the master distribution list for good cause waivers was for sewer connections only. So if it's, if it meets the requirements of a good cause waiver located outside the city, not adjacent, instead of going through that process, we would just take it out of the already established master distribution list of gallons per day for sewer only and then process that administratively.
Are there, uh, good cause waivers for water as well?
Yes, there are.
And do they also require them to come into the city if, if they are, uh, you know, meet the criteria as well?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. President, that's all I had.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Anybody else? Mr. Deha?
We'll be notified. I mean, if it's not going to come in front of the mayor and council, we'll still be notified.
Yes.
That was my request.
Yeah, that, well, that's my request also. And that's clear in what it is that we're
So we put that in the policy. So you'll see, you can see that it's been added to the policy.
Okay, okay. So essentially, Mr. Depot, we're going to reallocate some of the some of the resources that we're going to go to the HSP project and the family and the VIP program. We're going to look at reallocating that for the HSP 127 Stoner Avenue project and the Rescue Mission project?
No, the
Too simplistic.
The water that was allocated for VIP initially, the 1,000 gallons per day, that stays with VIP.
Oh, okay.
The only thing we're taking away is from HSP to reallocate some of theirs to their current project, proposed project, and anything remaining, as well as that rounding up of gallons, anything remaining of that also be available, which would then be available for the Rescue Mission.
Okay, okay. Mr. President?
Mr. Deha?
I wanted to mention that Mr. Depot and his staff are doing a wonderful job as far as getting back with people and addressing the complexity of the water allocation with the number of folks that have been in touch with me as far as figuring out. There is something going on with the septic inspections these days. Maybe they have stiffened the qualifications or something like that. But there are a number of young folks that are looking at purchasing homes and selling homes, and they've been sort of caught in the middle. And staff has just come through for them over and over again. And I really appreciate that kind of customer service.
Good to hear.
Do you need, you need need a motion to approve this resolution?
We do need a motion to approve the resolution.
May I make it?
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make
There's a motion for Deha to approve?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's second from Ms. Gilbert. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well,
Hearing none? Mr. Deha?
No, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. I've caught up. It takes a little while sometimes. Thank you.
All right. Very good. If there are no further comments or questions, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of Resolution Number 20-06, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. And the resolution is adopted. We have one item of unfinished business, and that is Warner Construction Change Order Number 10 for 45 West Main Street renovation project. And we'll turn to Mr. Glass for that. Mr. Glass?
Yes, sir. Just a brief recap, because this was something that was talked about, I think, at least one council meeting ago, maybe two, actually. So this is with regard to conditioning the space at the rear of the bank building, 45 West Main, where the greenhouse portion of the glass construction is currently the and the initial design was that that space not be conditioned, not air-conditioned. It would be heated but not air-conditioned. The architect contends that it was not necessary to do, not required by code. So therefore, it was not included in the project. The, at the last council meeting, it was discussed, and we were directed to get the actual change order cost, because there was some variation in what the projected amounts may be. That change order cost came back at $45,726. And as per Ms. Matthews' memo here, it appears that the architect would not, at this point, does not think that that's worthy of that amount of money, and that the project is not necessary to be completed. So I guess at this point, the question is what the council wants to do with that space.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glass. So as Mr. Glass noted, we had some conversation about this, and we directed staff to go ahead and proceed with getting the additional information for an RFP. And so we now have reached another decision point on this. So what would you like to do? A motion? Would you like to discuss it?
Mr.?
Would you like to be heard?
Mr. President?
Mr. Deha?
I would imagine that for the purposes of discussion, we should make a motion to approve.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
All right. There's been a motion from Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. There's been a second motion from Mr. Dale, with second Mr. England. Mr. Glass, I take it that you are still recommending that we should do this?
So in my opinion, I think that if it's, I think originally, it should have been included. The existing bank building had that space conditioned. As a matter of fact, the louvers are still there, and I think it's a mistake for it to not have been included originally. I think that unfortunately, it costs more now to have it done, because it was not originally anticipated to be completed in a project. And I think in time, you'll regret the decision of not completing it, and it will cost you more than. The last thing, I guess, that I have to say is I really, it's no of no consequence to me. That's my professional opinion. I don't have to, I'm not trying to sway anyone's opinion one way or the other. I don't have a reason to do that. But that's my common sense viewpoint of what's transpired here.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. And yeah, we've got professionals disagree sometimes, and that's the case we're in now. So we've got to make a judgment call here. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
Do you know, Mr. Glass, do you know why the architect still believes it doesn't need to be air-conditioned, with his rationale for that is?
So what he had talked about in his, and it's included in the further pages of the review that Ms. Matthews put together, he contends that there will be enough foot traffic in and out of the back door to keep that area of reasonable temperature, which, you know, in my opinion, I think there'll be foot traffic in the morning. That's where the staff's going to come in and out, and there'll be foot traffic in the afternoon whenever needs. But that throughout-the-day part is not like, you know, you're receiving customers through that area. So I, again, I disagree with that. But whatever you decide to do is, again, is of no consequence to me.
Please do. Go ahead, Mr. Cavaci.
So, Mr. Glass, that stairway is strictly ingress-and-egress, meaning people are going to come in, go up or down the stairs, and there's nothing else occurs in that stairway outside of that. Is that correct?
That's correct. It owns all three floors. Yes.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Glass, did I read that we cannot add a air-conditioning unit, say, later? Like a Mitsubishi, where it's the duckless units? That's not going to be acceptable in that area? So we would need to change our minds later? Is that correct?
So it doesn't mean you can't change your mind later, but the current regulations, as per the architect's direction, is that you can't have the pressurized coolant lines in that space because of fire code. So that will always, as long as that regulation exists, that will always preclude using a duckless unit like a Mitsubishi, Mr. Slim.
Okay. And what about, because I was, I was one of the, I think I was the lone vote that said that I was not for the additional cost of the air conditioning. I just did not see it. What do you think would possibly be the ramifications of not air-conditioning that area other than employee discomfort?
So we kind of went through that at 56 West Main in the vestibule there as well. This is not even our building, but it got to the point that it was quite dreadful to be in that space. And so it wasn't necessarily the city that they complained enough to have the property owner install the unit, but the property owner was the one that installed it. I don't know that we leaned on anybody to make that happen, but it was it's certainly not, it doesn't develop a professional appearance at all. And again, I think in this case, had the air conditioning been installed in the original project, it's, you know, it's $45,000 right now. You probably wouldn't even have recognized the difference in cost. That's my opinion.
So there's nothing that's going to, the cooling of the area has nothing to do with any, anything as far as the building structure itself? Just the comfort of employees?
Well, that's what air conditioning does, is just for comfort purposes, but
I know. I was just wondering whether it was going to affect the metal or the inside of the windows and condensation or anything else that, as far as the construction or the building itself in that area?
No, so it won't change anything for the construction part. I can't guarantee about the, you know, in these humid days that we've had this, well, we have them every summer as far as that goes. But I can't guarantee you that the space will not condensate on the inside of the windows. I wouldn't say that. I mean, I'm going to hope for you that it doesn't. But that's as far as I can go with that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Are you ready for the vote? All those in favor of approving Change Order Number 10 on the pricing that was submitted, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
So that's two to two. And, well, I really get to break a tie. And I'm going to vote nay. So motion fails. Move on then to the next item, which is new business. So first item on a new business is the council confirmation of the mayor's nominee for Director of Finance, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right. So we have a late nomination for a new director that we've vetted and interviewed multiple times now for our finance director position. So in accordance with Section 29-3 of the City Code, I'm seeking the common council's confirmation of my nomination of Lydia Colston as the city's next Director of Finance, as well as authorization to sign the associated employment agreement. My nomination of Ms. Colston follows an extensive interview process and reference and background checks. Ms. Colston, who is a certified public accountant, currently works for a firm that provides tax preparation, accounting, and auditing services. Her prior work experience includes four years as a municipal finance director in the state of Maine and employment with a firm that performs local government audits. So we, I've had some version of an interview with her three times now. I know council president here, Mr. Pecorero, was part of the first interview. And then the entire council, I believe, absence of Mr. England, were there for more of a meet and greet, the last one. So I spent quite a bit of time talking to Ms. Colston. So I, you know, I'm recommending her very highly for the position.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I have a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment?
I make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment.
Second. Motion by Ms. Gilbert and second by Mr. Cavaci. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, let me just add my comments. And I think that I appreciated the mayor inviting me to participate in the interviews. We had a panel that included a finance director from outside the city to give us, you know, the benefit of their professional opinion, as well as, you know, the opinions of the city staff that participated. And I'm happy to be able to endorse the mayor's appointment. I think it was a good choice. And I look forward to, you know, being able to work with Ms. Colston over the next few years. Is there, hearing no further discussion, move on to a vote? All those in favor of confirming the mayor's appointment, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay? Opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. And Ms. Colston is confirmed. Next item is mayoral appointments to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. Mr. Mayor?
So, Mr. President, how would you like me to do this? Would you, would you like me to address each appointment individually? Or would you like me to go through all of them? You know, all at once, and then? I don't know how you want to actually do the confirmation.
I believe the precedent is to take a separate vote on each one. So why don't we just go do it that way? Unless somebody, you know, unless somebody wishes to suggest otherwise.
Okay.
I don't, I don't mind. I mean, unless somebody has an objection, I don't mind him choosing to vote the whole group, myself. But it's just my opinion.
Mr. President?
All right. Then please just tell us about them all, Mr. Mayor. We'll take a vote on all of them together.
Here comes, here comes the marathon. All right, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board has been inactive for a number of years. Recently, interest has been expressed and reconstituted in the advisory board. I'm asking for the common council to approve the following appointments to the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. First, we have Joshua Ambrose. He's an associate dean at McDaniel College. Mr. Ambrose oversees the Center for Experience and Opportunity and Office of Student Engagement Offices and coordinates the Encompass Distinction in Entrepreneurship there. He has led a number of initiatives in the last few years to connect college students with opportunities on Main Street. Mr. Ambrose volunteers with a number of nonprofits in town, and is a strong believer in living local. The reason, besides just being a solid candidate, which I can say for everyone here, I know that we, you know, we're trying to connect McDaniel with a lot of our our programs and certainly our events downtown. So that's one of the reasons for that appointment. And then next, we have Aaron Burrows. Mr. Burrows has been at his current job with the Department of Defense contractor, Booz Allen Hamilton, for 11 years, where he has served as a network engineer, cloud solutions architect for the past six years. He's also currently a technical sergeant with the Maryland Air National Guard located in the middle of Maryland with a total of 19 years of military service. Mr. Burrows is an Eagle Scout, a love for the outdoors. He's been a valuable member of the Westminster Historic District Commission fairly recently since November 2019. Next, we have Ms. Jessica Laird. Some of you know her from the last council race. Ms. Laird worked in the creative sector before moving to development fundraising. She spent seven years as a major gift officer in the Office of Institutional Advancement at McDaniel College. Ms. Laird is currently employed as the Director of Development for Homewood Foundation at the Homewood Retirement Centers. And I would like to say that Ms. Laird does live out of the city. I chose one person that lived out of the city. You know, I've been told by some of the people that have been around a little longer than me that it's kind of a tradition to do so, since a lot of people from outside the city do take advantage of our parks and rec services. I want to include someone while she recently moved out of the city, and she lives just out of the city. She is not a city resident. Next, we have Kevin Wagman. Everyone's very familiar with Mr. Wagman. We all know and love him. Mr. Wagman is a member of the city's Ethics Commission and Historic District Commission. He's also an enthusiastic user of the Westminster Family Fitness Center. And try to go a day without seeing Mr. Wagman walking around town. He's getting his 200,000 steps every day. Next, I got Ms. Jennifer Yang. She's a graduate of MIT and the Johns Hopkins University. Ms. Yang has over 23 years of strategic management and technology consulting experience working with commercial companies and government agencies. She also has over 20 years of event planning experience, has organized She also has over twenty years of event planning experience, has organized events for several nonprofit organizations in the Washington DC area. Ms. Yang recently moved to Westminster in two thousand and nineteen. She's an entrepreneur with several business ventures, including Inflection LLC, which is a consulting company, Taste Buds Events LLC, which is a theme-based tasting events company, and then Covalent Spirits, Covalent Spirits LLC, New Distillery. I'd also like to say that Covalent Spirits is a, because I missed this to my my mayor comments. The Carol Biz Challenge is this Thursday at six o'clock, and she's one of the contestants in that challenge. I will be judging it along with a couple of their judges. I'll get that plug in now since I forgot to earlier, but everyone should tune in. I believe Comcast Channel nineteen, it'll be airing. So if you'd like to learn a little bit more about Ms. Jennifer Yang or see how well I judge the event, you can tune in Thursday at six. Okay, and last but not least, we have Steve Zaluzki. Mr. Zaluzki is an IT professional and has been a resident in Westminster for four years, a resident of Willis Street. His home backs up to City Park, and Mr. Zaluzki coaches his son's rec sports team. He's interested in to offer his knowledge in organizing events and activities to benefit the Westminster community. So I request the common council confirm the following appointments for the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. Point Joshua Ambrose with a term expiration of March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Point Aaron Burrows with a term expiration of March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Point Jessica Laird with a term expiration of March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Point Kevin Wagman with a term expiration of March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Point Jennifer Yang with a term expiration of March first, two thousand and twenty-two. And appoint Steve Zaluzki with a term expiration of March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've heard the mayor's explanation of his of his nominees, and we have a motion. Well, do we, I guess, we we do have a motion to approve. All those in favor of approving the mayor's nominees, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The opinion of the chair of the ayes have it, the ayes have it, and the nominations are confirmed. And move on now to the next item, and I'm going to turn the chair over to Mr. Cavaci for just a moment.
Got it, Mr. President, thank you. The next item of business on the agenda is a vote to go into closed session. And actually, I'll be reading the the request to do so.
It's long before that, Mr. Cavaci.
Oh, I apologize. See, look, you give it to me for one second, Mr. President, I'm falling down on the job already. Thank you, Mr. President, I've got it. Okay, so the next item of new business is the Warner Construction Change Order Number Twelve at forty-five West Main Street renovation project, Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. What I have is actually is number eleven, and that is with regard to the extension of the road repairs for the utility work for the forty-five West Main Street project. Hopefully, I've got the right thing here.
Yeah, it's it is eleven, Mr. Glass, then we'll go to twelve.
Okay.
I I was quickly finding my my agenda. I had to go back and scroll through to find it, so yes, it it is eleven, and then we'll do then we'll do twelve.
Okay, that sounds good. Actually, twelve's not, I don't have that agenda for twelve, but I know what it's about this. We'll be able to talk about that as well. Anyway, so the issue is that the normal roadway patch repair is a one-foot cutback on either side of the trench, whatever the trench would be for. In this case, it's for water and sewer. The issue is that the road condition is ravelled and rutted to the point that once they do the one-foot cutback, that portion of the road repair can be made perfect. The issue is going to be the condition of the road before the road repair and after the road repair, because that is the existing condition of the of the pavement. And trying to make that transition in such an abrupt change will very likely test everyone's feelings whether for their tightness and will also probably last as a speed containment as well for Main Street. So not that I'm a proponent for anybody to speed on Main Street or or additional dental work. What we really need to do is to is to spread that change, that transition of the the roadway patch to to extend further on on both sides of that of the one-foot cutback. And unfortunately, that that's going to put us around thirty-four thousand dollars for for the milling and paving that that portion will will undertake then. So that's, and the recommendation is that we move forward with that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I believe you're muted, Mr. Cavaci.
Okay, sorry about that. Are there any questions?
Mr. Cavaci, you want to entertain a motion for discussion?
I do.
Can I make a motion, please?
Okay, motion by Mr. Dayhoff, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Yingling, seconds? If there are no other questions or comments, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those, I'm sorry, Mr. Dayhoff?
May I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Hey, Mr. Glass, is this consistent with the road cut ordinance that we put together quite a number of years ago? Because I've often thought that we may want to revisit that road cut and expand that transition a bit. I mean, does it specify one foot in in the road cut ordinance? Or is there a specification in the road cut ordinance?
So that's actually a standard detail. And so if if the road is is in, you know, rather decent condition, then typically the one-foot cutback is is really all that
Okay.
But but in this case, again, that section of road, we've been kind of held up and waiting on some some work from BG&E to to reconstitute the road, but until, I hate to do that and then have BG&E come in behind us and then rip it all back up again. So that's, you know, the majority of the reason why it's in the condition that it is now. And then to cut a perpendicular trench across it and, you know, make that follow the crown of the road, again, it's that's that's going to be tough to make that transition without without stretching that out a little bit on either side of the of the trench, unfortunately.
My question's been answered, Mr. Cavaci, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of the Warner Construction Change Order Number Eleven signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. President, I see your back. If you want to go ahead and take over, I've already bumbled this up enough as it is.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mr. Cavaci. So move on to the next item, which is Warner Construction Change Order. Did you declare that it had been adopted, by the way?
I, yeah, the change order number eleven is adopted. We're now on to number twelve, the the late entry.
I just wanted to make sure you, right, so change order number twelve, Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. So this change order revolves around the structural steel in the front of the building where the where the curtain wall is and the back of the building, both, again, in the curtain wall areas where the demolition revealed rusting surfaces, not, and this is important that you know this, it's not to the point that, you know, nothing's going to fall down. It's not a structural problem because the material loss is not great enough for that to have occurred. I I discovered this probably three weeks ago, brought it to everyone's attention that it really should be power-tooled and not necessarily white metal blast, sandblasted, but power-tooled at least and the rust treated because it was going to be covered back up again with the new mullions and the treatment of the new window panels that that would be installed. There was a little bit of that work that that had been done in the back. Since that time, the the installation of the window panels had continued, and and now there are significant amounts of the of the existing rusted surface are are now covered up by the by the new materials. So we did get a change order to have that work done, but again, there's a significant amount of that that is that is already covered up at this point. So it's my understanding, although I I didn't see it in the packet, the the architect is is at this point is, and I should say this as well, the architect did not have anything in the project for to pay the contractor in the event that 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 kind of thing was encountered. So so it was not on a big incumbent upon the the contractor to do that at his cost. So that's my understanding at this point that the architect is is not recommending to move forward, and I don't think Ms. Matthews is either for containment of the of the rust that is still available and to be to be contained. And I think that's that's where we are. It was like nine thousand dollars or something, as I recall, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glass. So let's let's start out, let's see if we can get a motion on construction or change order number twelve. Is there a motion on this item?
Do you want to do it for the purpose of discussion? Because I do have
Yes, please. Right, yes, please, so we can just get it on the table.
I'll motion.
Get it on the table, if that's okay. Mr. Yingling, I'll defer to Mr. Yingling if he
I'll motion.
And I'll and I'll second it.
All right, so a motion from Mr. Yingling. All right, thank you. Motion from Mr. Yingling and a second by Mr. Dayhoff to approve change order number twelve. Are there any questions for Mr. Glass or any any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
First off, I just want to clarify something, Mr. Glass. I think this is correct, but correct me if I'm wrong, or if you don't know, let me know, but the proposal, it was, you know, nine, between nine and ten thousand dollars, I believe, the the exact number in front of me, but was that to correct all the rust or is that just what is exposed? With with, my understanding is we would pay that and that would still not correct all of the rust. Is that correct?
So my understanding was that it would have been to correct the rust that was available back when I found it. There still was some, there was a few window panels that had been installed, and some of that rust would have would have been encapsulated then. And when I say encapsulated, it's it's kind of it's not treated, but it's it's hidden from view by by the window panels that hadn't been installed. It was just a few of them at the time. Since that time, the contractor was not stopped. He continued to to install the rest of the the not the rest of them there because there are still still some windows that are that haven't been installed, and there is rust. You can stop by to take a look at it if you choose to, but so there is some rust available, but I believe the ninety-eight hundred dollars was to was to care for more rust than is exposed now. It's it's just very unfortunate that that we are where we are. The, you know, rust, I'm sure you'll remember the Neil Young song, Rust Never Sleeps, so.
Mr. Glass, or Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Ms. Ms. Gilbert.
Um, yes, so, Mr. Glass, I have I have a couple of questions. So I'm a little concerned that we didn't really address the rust in the areas that now are covered up with windows because I don't know, even though I was not a science major in high school or college, I do know that, as you just said, the rust will continue, and that's going to become a major problem down the road. So is the, this is just for the rust that that we can see if we cover it up to cut to treat that rust in in those areas that are easily able to get to right now.
Well, without without removing some of the existing, well, I say existing, it's newly installed mullion nail. You, in order to get to that rust, you, that really is the is the appropriate thing to do, in again, in my professional opinion, but.
So who's going to be responsible for that ten years down the road or less?
It'll be all covered up. You won't be able to see it.
Until the window falls out, like, really, I I don't, so what would be the possible? What then would be the the consequence of not dealing with it now?
So again, the the rust won't stop, but, you know, I I would say this, and in my professional opinion as well, there's not enough material loss there right now in order for this to be a structural problem. I'd say it's probably going to outlive all of us, but it's not the right way to approach the repair of the problem. It was so so easy to to fix it at the time, but is now that's not the case, so.
I just, I I and I don't, I just have a concern because I I dealt with it. I know this isn't a a business office, but I dealt with it in my own home, and there was metal plating around my basement windows, and it never was treated fifteen years later. I literally had holes in 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 my basement windows, and I had to replace the whole the whole section, so I'm just hoping that's not going to be what happens here.
Me too. I, again, the, if if the rust isn't treated and contained, it will continue. If it's, once it's covered up, you won't know what it's doing because you won't be able to see it. So, but again, I believe in my professional opinion, it will outlast every one of us. It's just not the right thing to do. Just my opinion.
Mr. President.
Sure, so just before we go on, I would I would direct everybody to the comments in the in the memo we received from Ms. Matthews, where it discusses this issue and just gives a little explanation of what the architect thinks is is likely, and I, yeah, I I certainly share the concerns that have been expressed myself, and I'll I'll comment perhaps later, but, Mr. Mr. Dayhoff, should you want to say something?
Well, I I guess, I guess I was, I'm concerned also. I I share Councilwoman Gilbert's concern. It's, it doesn't seem to be prudent to spend the amount of money that we're spending on this project and yet not take care of something like this. I'm kind of unhappy that it wasn't taken care of because in my experience with property management, it needs to be taken care of. I don't know, I mean, Mr. Glass, would you recommend that the windows that have been installed be deinstalled? And and that this be and and that this condition be addressed? Would that be, I mean, that's that's, if if I were the property manager, that's what I would consider anyway.
So unfortunately, that's really the only way to get to the rust that's been covered up. Again, it's such a shame that the that the project wasn't wasn't stopped at that time. It would have taken a half a day to do all, to contain all the rust and treat it, but that's
Well, my dad, my dad taught me install, install, deinstall, assemble, disassemble, repeat. I I don't know. I mean, it seems to me that we ought to have it fixed while we're while we're while while we're at this at this point in in the project. I mean, I I don't really want, I mean, it sort of takes defenestration to another to another level. I'm, I I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to kick that can down the road for for other folks way down the road because the rust is not going to stop, even though it's encapsulated. So, I mean, I
Any other comments?
I think we ought to consider, I think we ought to consider deinstalling the the windows that have been installed and and having this fixed. Yeah, I I agree with Mr. Pecorero's look on his face. I mean, yeah, I don't I don't know what to do.
Mr. President.
Well, it's it's, Mr. Cavaci.
Who is Jim, who is Jim MacArthur?
He is the architect's rep who was on site every, about every other day.
So he's saying he does not recommend that we do this, that he doesn't believe the price submitted to be reasonable for the work that could be completed. That that's what his recommendation is. Is Warner Construction, and I apologize, we got this very late today. So I this was the one part of our agenda I have not had an opportunity to read. So is Warner Construction recommending that we do or don't do this?
I'm not sure that Warner would take a position either way because they are the contractor that they'll they'll treat the rust if they're paid to do it, but certainly if they're, again, it was nothing in the architect's specifications to speak to this in the event that it was encountered, so Warner's not going to do it or nothing. They're going to want the change order.
Well, I I understand that, but I would also like to believe that if they thought that it was a serious safety
Well, I I understand that, but I would also like to believe that if they thought that it was a serious safety concern, they would have raised a red flag. Is that not the case? Is that, are they just? I guess I'm, you know, and I understand where you're coming from. I understand what you're saying. Yep, you want to address it. If you can see it, it wouldn't have been a big deal to do it, but you know, you're, you're saying this is structural steel, not just architectural design application. This actually is holding up that vestibule or something. Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct. And again, I don't think this is, it's not going to fall down. It's it's not like that, but certainly not at this point. There's not enough material lost to to create a problem. But this is, this is what actually, this is the space between the windows that holds the roof, that the windows there's, they'll be covered with aluminum as well. So you, again, you won't even see it by the time it's done, but assuming there's not going to be any rust streaks or anything, and I would doubt that it would be because of the way the the process works there. But, you know, I'd hate to guarantee that either, but all I'm saying is it's just a shame that we had opportunity there and and we did not, in my opinion, did not.
I I understand that. Mr. President, can I continue for one more minute? Go ahead. So I I understand what you're saying, but here's my my concern, Mr. Glass, aside from the $10,000, because that's look, if it's a safety issue, that's chump change for a safety issue. But my worry is this. And so when you have this surface rust, to your point, it will take a significant amount of time, maybe 100 years before the level of rust would get to the point where it could be structurally a problem. My fear is if we treat part of it and and the other part clearly hasn't been treated and someone goes in 35 years from now to inspect and they look at a portion of it that was the treated part and they say, oh, okay, this is no problem. It looks great. But they don't look at the untreated part because they're right next to each other, one column apart, maybe, depending on where they look. We could be setting up some future generation for a problem by only treating part of it. So based on that logic, I I almost think we shouldn't at this point unless we're going to go back and pull everything apart, which it doesn't sound to me like that. First of all, that's not the motion, that's not the suggestion, that's not the motion that we're talking about. The motion we're talking about is whether to do this or not, which is only going to be part of that steel. So I think I'm inclined to say no, not because I don't want to spend the $10,000, but because I don't want to put some future inspector in a position where he looks at his column, it looks fine to him, and the one right next to it's got rust, or more rust. Does that make sense, Mr. Glass, or am I crazy in thinking that?
No, I get what you're saying, but it's pretty much, so I'll say this, it's pretty much every column that has some amount of rust on it. So and probably the ones, the portions of the columns at the bottom were were probably more corroded than than the than the others. I I get what you're saying. And again, I, you know, you guys make the decision. I, it really for me, I think it's a shame that it wasn't handled earlier, but, you know, that's that's where we are. So if we just, if you decide not to do it, again, it's, I don't think it's a safety problem. I think it's going to outlive all of us.
Mr. Glass. Now, I, for clarification, are these just the columns or are some of this, the areas where windows are sitting in? Where there's aluminum around it?
Yep. So it'll all be, it will all be have an aluminum shell around it. It's the vertical sections and then there are horizontal sections as well that the windows fill in.
Okay.
All those sections are are corroded.
So my my concern, and I don't mean to make a big deal out about about this, but once the 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 rusting continues, it will rust into the aluminum and the aluminum is going to fall apart along with that.
So it's actually a different process. The aluminum will oxidize and rust is is oxidation as well.
Right.
But the, but it's different for the dissimilar metals, though.
Okay, because that that that's kind of what happened personally, and then that's why there was holes and then there was leaking water and and it ended up being you know, something that I had to address. But when you're talking a building, then you also would possibly be leading into the leaking water and and the damage of whatever the interior is. However, and for me, that was 10 years down the road, so it didn't take that long.
Right. So again, let me, let me, just for context here, let me direct you to the what the firm said. And I quote here from the memo. "The rust that was at the base of the columns, was the worst of it, was scaling that was about a quarter inch deep, which is a fairly good buildup and was cause for investigation. However, once removed, it was realized that this rust was nothing more than a surface buildup that didn't go more than a few thousandths of an inch deep, barely noticeable once sanded and painted. With the column base rust being the worst case of oxidation, which then turned out to be only surface rust, this led us to believe that the remainder of the surface rust was not cause for concern. As for the remaining rust, with the new curtain wall system, the frames are able to drain and vent in a sense that will allow for any condensation to exit the space easily, stopping the ongoing oxidation of the frames." Now, I don't know you know, what that means, you know, exactly, and we relied, Mr. Glass, to interpret that for us, but you know, I think that, you know, just, you know, for the purpose of the conversation that we're having and for anybody who may be listening, it's important to say that, you know, that's the, that's the information sort of that kind of is countervailing here. You know, my view, I, yeah, I heard what Mr. Kavachi said and I understand his point, but my own, you know, my thought is that, you know, we're better off dealing with what we have left. You know, rather than, you know, we probably ought to go ahead and move on it rather than, you know, just letting, you know, taking the chance on the rest of it. You know, I think that, you know, while the risk according to the architect is minor, I'd rather deal with what we can than not deal with anything at all.
But, Mr. President.
That's just my two cents. Mr. Dayhoff.
But help me out here a little bit. I thought this is why we had an inspector on the site.
And it is. And the inspector, and according to the inspector there, so like, once again, we've got Mr. Glass's view that, you know, we probably should deal with this and should have dealt with it. We've got our, you know, our inspector and our architect saying that they don't think it's a, that it's worth the cost of doing this to deal with it. You know, this, this is beyond my professional judgment. You know, I studied political science, not any kind of a practical science. So I'm not in a position to, you know, to say what makes, you know, you know, which is right and which is wrong.
Mr. President.
But I tend to trust Mr. But I, yeah, I trust Mr. Glass in saying that it's something that should be dealt with. I'm not sure that it makes sense to go back and rip everything out, but I think we probably ought to go ahead and deal with what we can still access.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
So it's a couple of things I wanted to point out. I'm going to have a question for Mr. Glass, but you know, we're talking about Warner Construction and we're discussing the architect. I don't think there's, there's definitely not a clear cut answer here because it's not just an architect telling us what should or shouldn't be done. I mean, the architect has structural engineers there dealing with this, right? So that was the first question I had, right? So I'm going to take, I'm definitely going to take advice of an engineer over an architect in this case. So we have, we have, you know, engineers there saying one thing. We have our engineer here, Mr. Glass, which he's bringing, you know, my opinion, conservative, like abundance of caution, and I think this is exactly the kind of thing where we need that. So it's not a, it's not like a clear cut answer either way. I guess one question I have that would kind of sway my opinion is so if we're talking this as a problem in 100 years, maybe, right? Is there anything, any other part of that building that would not last that long that would give us access to this? So, you know, if the windows were replaced in less than 100 years, you know, would that give us access to address this? Or is this a bigger problem that can only really be addressed during you know, during this construction phase without having to rip a bunch of stuff out later?
Any questions for me?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, when we throw the terms around of 100 years or or a million years kind of thing, I'm, I, what I said was it would outlast all of us. I'm 59. That would make me 159. And I'm sure I'm not going to last that long. So I I think that very likely, just like the repair work that's in reinstallation that's being done now, I think that building Councilman Dayhoff would be able to to say for sure, but I think that was in the 60s is when those those curtain windows were, curtain walls were installed. So my guess is it would be prudent to to reevaluate that as technologies change and that would happen probably in the probably the same kind of time period of when it was originally installed till today. So you know, is it going to be a problem then? It may be, and but then you could address it at that time. It could be that, you know, there's, there's more issues with the building or it may be that we have a completely different idea and that whole thing was taken down and and, you know, replaced with something very different. It's we don't know what the future is going to bring there. And and again, I don't want to be, I don't want to cry wolf here. It's not going to fall down. I'll say that for sure. But what's, again, it's disappointing that we had opportunity there and 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 it was, and we did not take that.
Building is not falling down. What are the consequences? What's worst case scenario if something like this, Glass, Mr. Glass, and how how far away might that happen?
So again, I'd say, you know, probably within its useful lifetime, probably in the 40 year range would be my guess, that that it probably could be, could be looked at and could could be a problem at that time. That's tough to say. You know, there was a discussion about the draining system that the the new curtain wall has. I can tell you that anything that would continue that corrosive environment and and certainly condensation on the inside of the walls, if any of that could get to the to the structural steel, that's you know, that's not going to be a good thing. So how quickly that's going to be? That's, it's, that's really, really tough to say. If it were treated, I'd say, you know, we're certainly going to double the lifetime if if the if the rust had been power toed and treated.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other thoughts on this? So the question before us, Mr. Kavachi.
I know I've already spoke once, but two, two very quick things. I'll be very brief. I I'm still concerned about us doing this to half and not the other half and what problems that might cause down the road. So I'm going to vote against this, but not because I'm trying to be cheap or because I want to save $10,000. I'm just worried about treating part of it, not all of it, and what that could do to a future inspector. Secondly, and this isn't for this evening, but I'd like to get an answer as to why this, this, this got to this point and it wasn't addressed sooner while everything was still exposed. Again, that's not for this evening, but I would like an answer on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Anything else on this?
Mr. Mr. President. I want to echo Mr. Kavachi's, I want to echo Mr. Kavachi's remarks because, I mean, this is why we paid an inspector to be on this site. So I don't know why it is that we're in this position. I think I'm not a moment or two away from a vote and I still don't quite know what to do, but I got to tell you I don't see why we don't deinstall those windows and and treat all of this metal properly while we are at this stage of the project. Mr. Glass has suggested that maybe it'll be quite some time before the rust is a problem, but there could be any number of variables with that. The windows have been in for about 30 years, 40 years at this point in time. They were approximately installed around 1980. But we don't know what the new construction processes or the materials are going to do as far as as far as advancing the rust. I I just kind of, when we're spending this kind of money on a project and trying to do it well, I'd kind of hate to kick the can down the road for a for a problem down the road. Can you imagine the expense if there happens to be some sort of structural failure with that front down the road as opposed to what the expense would be right now?
Mr. President.
I don't know what, I don't know what to do. I mean, I'm going to have to take Mr. Mr. Glass's recommendation.
Mr. President, can we have someone mark what is treated and what has not been treated so that there is, so that the inspectors know the difference? Is that, is that a possibility or is that not?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the first part of what you said.
Is it possible we can mark what's been treated and what hasn't been treated so that the future, when the inspectors come in in the future, they'll know that there is a difference? Is is that possible?
Well, I'm sure it certainly is possible. We can, you know, we've got, we'll have records of the construction project and we'll be able to to save that information for somebody else.
But that's great. It could be done as a red line on the drawings. Absolutely could.
Because I I just don't see why we wouldn't move forward in at least treating what is available to treat at this point. At the, at least, if if not tear out everything that's been done and redo it, but at the least, treat what's there.
Well.
Right.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
I mean, was it really responsible to install these windows when, 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 when an existing deficiency had been been uncovered and discovered? I mean, is that really our responsibility? I, I mean, I, I, I still just not quite sure what to do here.
Right. Well, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, provide information here, you know, while being in the chair. I would just say that, you know, we you know, once again, you know, as happens in these kinds of cases, we have recommendation from our you know, architectural firm who we are paying to inspect this and and, you know, keep eye on this project for us. They've, they discounted the issue and said that it is not, you know, that significant. On the other hand, Mr. Glass has a different view. I certainly have a lot of confidence in Mr. Glass based on many, many years of association with him. So that's, that's the level we find ourselves in. And that's why you know, while, you know, I, and I want to discuss this after we resolve this issue. You know, a potential solution going forward for similar instances, you know, as we finish the construction on this project, but you know, we just have, we have competing views or differing views on this. You know, it is not a, it is a view that is thoughtful as you read the documents, you know, they don't, you know, they've got, you know, they've given it some thought and they've got an explanation. So we just have to make a judgment once again, you know, on the course that we want to go follow at this point, you know. The the option before us is to go ahead and and deal with what's left that we can easily access. And I certainly endorse that option. It's something that we ought to do. And I think that Ms. Gilbert's, you know, comment about noting, you know, the parts that weren't done certainly makes a great deal of sense there for anybody in the future to go back and look at this so that if anybody finds a problem 40, 50, 60 years from now that they can say, well, here's the part that needs to be dealt with and this part was dealt with when the original construction was done. So that that makes some sense to me. Any other, any other comments on this? Or any other thoughts?
Mr. President, is there any way that we can go back? Is there any way we can go back and say, I mean, personally, if it was construction in my house and I found this out, I'd make the person doing the construction go back and remove everything and take care of it to my liking because I'm paying him. So why can't, I mean, it's not our mistake. It sounds like it's, it's an issue that was created because someone's opinion was that it wasn't an issue where our opinion may be that it is. I don't know. I just, I just feel like it's something that it shouldn't be our responsibility as far as monetarily to to fix this and it should be somebody else's for those areas that have been treated.
I mean, I, you know, we would have to consult counsel on that, but my my thought on that would be we were not unaware of this issue. You know, I mean, they, this was pointed out to us at the time. So I think it'd be very difficult for us to go back and change that they made, claim that they made a mistake because, you know, we certainly had the option to stop them at some point, but we didn't. So, you know, I don't think we can, you know, go back to them. I think. So, you know, I don't think we can, you know, go back to them. I think, you know, the cost would be on us if we wanted to go back and make any changes there.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glass, would you, would you agree with that, Mr. Glass?
Uh, yes, sir. We did have opportunity to, would have either taken a work directive or stop work at that time, but we opted, I, I suppose opted not to do that. And what I was, my understanding was because that's considered a critical path item that the intent was not to, not to have the project linger any longer by, by causing delays at that point. I think that's in the memo as well.
Mr. Glass, who was the "we" on that? I, I'm sorry, I just, on who decided that? I'm confused on that.
So again, I think that information is, is probably in the memo that I don't have in front of me.
Okay, I don't, okay.
It might be worth.
I don't have that either. All right. I'm sorry. Okay.
So, Mr. President.
I think we've had a, Mr. Kavachi.
Yeah, I, you know, I, as we have been working on this, I've also been trying to read at the same time. And because as, as I said, we got this late today. I'm just now reading it for the first time. It seems pretty clear to me that this memo is saying this, this just isn't necessary, that we don't need to do it, that it's, that it's not, not an issue that needs to be addressed. The more I'm sitting here reading this. And to the mayor's point, you know, it's, it's the architect, but that architect also has, I, I would, I'm sure structural, structural engineers, that, that if he's not one, they're on staff and they talk about the, the depth of the rust and after they inspected it, that it turned out it's not what they thought it was and that it's not an issue. So frankly, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not completely clear why we're having this debate because they're, they're saying we don't need to, and, and that's, I'm assuming why they moved forward and started putting the windows in. That's kind of where I'm at, just for what it's worth. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So any further discussion? Anyone else wish, any, anybody have anything new to contribute? You're right. So the question is, do we go forward with trying to clean up the rust on the remaining, yeah, the remaining portion, portion where, where it's still accessible to us? Or not? That's the question. And if you're ready for the vote, we'll move, we'll go ahead and take a vote on this. All those in favor of approving change order number twelve signify by saying aye. I, I record two votes aye. Does the post say nay?
Nay.
That's two votes nay. All right. Well, once again, I'm going to, I guess I have to break a tie. I'm going to vote to go ahead and approve change order twelve, just out of an abundance of caution is my view. So before we move on to the next item, I, I wanted to raise this because, so here's the challenge for us. You know, we are in, we are moving along with this, with this project and, you know, on occasion, the architect or the, the contractor comes to us and says, we've got an issue that needs to be changed and we need to, we need to know what you want to do with it. And of course, the challenge is that, you know, to get approval, to spend additional money has to wait until the next meeting of the mayor and common council. And as you, as we've noticed here tonight, some of these things aren't part of the critical path. Some of these things have to get done now or in a timely fashion in order to avoid delays. And of course, we're all trying to avoid delays in this project. We want to see it get done, you know, in a timely manner and on time and, you know, be able to, you know, start using the building. So, so that's the challenge for us. I don't have a solution to it yet. The only, the only option I can suggest is that if you're willing to, when these things do come up, you know, we could certainly call, you know, a quick emergency meeting and have, you know, and have the issue put before the mayor and council, you know, for a, a decision. Otherwise, we're going to continue to find ourselves, you know, playing catch-up on some of these things. So I just wanted to put that out there for you all and see if there's any, any view on how you'd like to deal with it going forward.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Um, I, I guess I've thought about this all along. Should we take a look at, should we, should we consider taking a look at maybe, because, because these are only going to pile up as, as we start to, to look at completing the project. They're only going to continue and, and they're only going to continue to be considered to be critical path issues. I wonder if we want to set a, a limit, maybe, maybe we could look at our code. Is it still over seventy-five hundred that requires council approval or, or maybe, I thought we raised that. I mean, what I, what I think I'm getting to is, is that with these critical decisions in the future, maybe we ought to look at making a motion that the council president and, and the mayor and the public works director can make that decision. And if, if you all decide that you can't make that decision, then we, we have to have a short emergency meeting. Because my experience with these building projects is that this is not an anomaly. That this kind of stuff is going to continue as the project begins to, to come to, to completion. Or maybe, maybe include the public works committee chair, include council member Yingling in that. I, I, I think it'd be prudent that we take a look at that. I'm, I'm pretty unhappy that, 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 that this happened. I thought that's why we paid an inspector.
Well, it is. And, and, you know, before we, before I reckon, I just want to say, you know, we do and it's just a matter of judgment, you know, and that's, you know, Mr. Glass may be right or, you know, the architect, architectural firm may be right. I don't know, but they, we are paying someone to give us advice. Their advice is very clear as, as I read to you as Mr. Kavachi noted. So, you know, it's just a matter of which advice you want to take. You know, and that's, that's where we find ourselves in some of these things. So I don't know that my judgment by itself is going to be superior to anybody else's.
Well, but, but in, in the end, in the end, I'm going to take Mr. Glass's judgment. I mean, if there's got to be a tiebreaker, I take Mr. Glass's judgment. I've worked with him for years and, and he works for the city as well for years.
And that is certainly a prerogative. I'm just saying that that's the dilemma. Mr. Kavachi, were you seeking recognition?
I'm sorry. Yes, I am, Mr. President. I, I like your suggestion. I think that given the fact that we're meeting virtually anyway, to pull together a quick meeting on an issue, this is a perfect example of where it would have been beneficial to be able to address this, you know, a week ago, those windows wouldn't have been installed. I may very well have voted the same way anyway, but I, I think that as we start drawing to the conclusion of this project, we may have a couple more pop-ups. I don't think it's problematic. I, I'll speak for myself. I think more often than not, I could be made available for a quick fifteen-minute meeting as long as we were given some information in advance so that we had an opportunity to look at it, maybe ask a couple of questions relative to the documentation. But I, I think that's a good suggestion. I think that's what we should do. I, I think waiting two, sometimes maybe three weeks could be problematic and really slow the project down. We're almost there. We're, 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 we're getting close to being finished. Let's get it done. And frankly, let's get it done without spending any more money than we absolutely have to at this point. That's my position, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Well, if, if, if it's acceptable to everybody else, you know, I think that's a good path for us to follow. The, you know, I, you know, I certainly have the authority as council president to, you know, to call a, a special meeting. And, you know, if, if the situation warrants it, I'll consult with the mayor and won't hesitate to do so. So we will try and move forward along that path. That, you know, I just wanted to make sure we had that conversation and you all didn't think we'd be wasting your time by, by taking those kinds of steps. So we'll move that, move forward that way. That being said, let's see, if I have your agenda here again. Mr. Kavachi, I believe you have a motion to make.
I do, Mr. President. According to section thirty to close session, Maryland Code Annotated General Provisions Article Three dash zero five B to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction or other personal personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals. Sub item number seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. And subsection eight, to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation. I move that we go into closed sessions immediately following this meeting, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. There's a motion to move into a closed session at the conclusion of the regular meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. There's been a motion from Mr. Kavachi and a second from Mr. Yingling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post say nay? The ayes seem to have it. The ayes have it. And the motion is approved. Well, now I'll move on to the departmental reports and we'll just go around. There's not, we've got a few folks on, a few missing tonight. Let's start with Chief Ludwell. We haven't heard from the chief yet tonight.
Good evening. So I, I just have a, so are, we have a total of five new officers in field training right now. And we have four from the police academy graduated a week ago. And then we have our one comparative compliance hire that councilperson Kavachi swore in. So they will undergo a minimum of two-hundred-and-eighty hours of field training while they're being evaluated and then they will go solo after that. We also completed a follow-up, a six-month survey regarding the new twelve-hour patrol schedule. The overwhelming majority of our sworn staff are, are in favor of the twelve-hour schedule versus an alternative. We also conducted an updated workload analysis which continues to support the current schedule. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Gruber.
Evening. I'll keep it brief. Your Recreation and Parks Department has been busy shaping up socially distant and COVID-nineteen compliant activities for the remainder of 2020. We have a robust schedule working for September right now. Certainly have plans in the works for October, November, and December. And as we continue through the planning process, I will keep you updated. We have begun to work collaboratively with the Arts Council on some activities as well. So as we get further in, along with the details, I will certainly make you aware of what we are planning. And of course, we will follow the appropriate channels by submitting special event permits and state highway permits, all of the things that are often required of us for events. And in addition, our plans to the Health Department for guidance, just to make sure that what we're thinking is compliant is approved by the Health Department. That concludes my report unless there's any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gruber. Mr. Glass, anything else had tonight?
Just two things to, to bring you up to speed on. We, well, we didn't open bids, but the bids were opened for the annual paving contract. And so that'll probably be on the next council agenda to, to award that contract. They were, bids were very close. Out of a million dollars, they were within forty thousand dollars on first and second. Excuse me. So that's really, really close. That's, I think we had good bids. Then secondly, we held our mandatory pre-bid conference for the Phase Three Influent Infiltration Work. That was on August twelfth, last day for questions for that. And, and of course, the, an addendum to go out will be, I think that's, that's yet this week. So that, that concludes my report unless there are questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glass. Mr. Dayhoff, do you have something from the fire department this evening?
Yes, sir, I do. Just a brief report. I need to do a, a report for July. And the total number of calls in July were five hundred and three, four hundred and eighteen of those calls were EMS, eighty-five of those calls were fire. Two hundred and eighty of the calls were in the city limits and two hundred and one of those calls were, were outside of the city limits. The one statistic I keep perseverating upon is the number of overlapping calls. That's, that's the number of calls in which we get more than three calls at a time and we have to bring in another company to, to cover for us. Over fifty percent of, of the time for two-hundred-and-fifty-one calls, we had to bring in either New Windsor or Reese or Pleasant Valley to help cover the, the EMS calls. Back to an initiative that Councilwoman Gilbert and I had discussed at the very beginning. A number of these calls are repeat calls. And I'm not, I'm not saying just a couple of repeat calls. We have some folks out there that call the fire department for assistance almost every day, every other day. And we really should take a good look at initiating some sort of a program to do some sort of an intervention with that. I think that, I think that's good enough for my report for right now. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Mr. Depow.
Okay. Good evening again. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard and forwarded a recommendation of approval to the mayor and common council for the Commerce Center Development Plan on August thirteenth. Development plan is scheduled to be before you on September fourteenth. Planning and zoning also scheduled, is scheduled to hold a special hearing for emergency ordinance number nine twenty-six, replacing Parks Board with Director of Recreation and Parks on August twenty-seventh. They are tentatively scheduled to review the Royal Farm Site Development Plan. This is directly associated with that Commerce Center Development Plan on September tenth. The BZA is scheduled to hear a modification request to their decision for the Valvoline Special Exception Application Case Number twenty oh-two on May fifth. And that completes my report unless there's any other questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Depow. Any questions for Mr. Depow? Mr. Davidson, we'll let you wrap up.
Good afternoon. I have no, nothing to filter for tonight.
All right. Very good. Thank you all. So we have one last item and that is citizen comments. This is the time when we usually invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. Unfortunately, it's difficult to have live comments online during these meetings. And so instead, we invite the public who wish to make comments to send them to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. And I will read the comments that we receive here at the end of the meeting so that they will go into the record. We have one comment tonight and it's from a group of people who are a part of the Coalition Against Prejudice, Jason LaFleur, Lauren Castle, Taryn McLean, Robert and Emily Royce, and Mike O'Brien. And they write, "On August fifteenth, 2020, during one of our semi-weekly pro-civil and human rights protests, a member of the Coalition Against Prejudice was the victim of an under-voted attack by an intoxicated and belligerent dissenter from the community. A concerned citizen witnessed the assault and called the police. The Westminster Police Department responded promptly. Officer De Angelis and the other responding officers did an exemplary job of upholding our civil rights. Over the past four months, we have had nothing but positive interactions with the Westminster Police Department. If other law enforcement agencies in the United States were to conduct, conduct themselves in a similar manner as Westminster does, this world would be a better place. We would like to thank them all." And that again is from the Coalition Against Prejudice. And that's a, chief, good job by your folks as they continue to, to deal with, you know, making sure that people have the right to express their, you know, their freedom of speech. And we thank all your, all your folks for that. And that's it for tonight. Our meeting is adjourned and we will reconvene in a few moments in our closed session. Thank you all and please stay safe. And that's it for tonight. Our meeting is adjourned and we will reconvene in a few moments in our closed session. Thank you all and please stay safe.